Good evening. My name is Sally Allen and I'm a member of the League Women Voters of the Ann Arbor area. I welcome you to our online forum featuring candidates for Ann Arbor City Council, Ward 2. The candidates will be on the ballot in the primary election on Tuesday, August 4th. This year, the League Women Voters is celebrating 100 years of expanding voter rights, educating voters, and shaping and influencing legislation at local, state, and national levels. We are pleased to sponsor these forums. The League is a nonpartisan civic organization that encourages informed and active participation by all citizens in government. The League works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and seeks to strengthen and broaden knowledge about our form of government and democracy. While the League does not support candidates or parties, we do take stands on issues that we have studied. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls, and thus we bring you tonight's program. Our moderator this evening is Peter Allen, who will explain the format and get us started.
Thank you, Sally. And I'm also a proud member of the Nonpartisan League Women Voters. They got good gender diversity. So tonight, we're going to have two candidates running for city council for you to listen to from Ward 2, Jane Lum and Lynn Song. The forum today will have the following format. Each candidate will have an opening statement for up to one minute. Each candidate will have a closing statement of up to 90 seconds. In between, I will ask six or seven questions which came from the Ann Arbor community. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each of these questions. At appropriate times, a sign on the screen will indicate the time remaining, 30 seconds, and then a sign saying "stop." If you have used up your time, you'll be allowed to finish your sentence, and then your microphone will be muted, so the other candidate has an equal opportunity to participate. The candidates will begin speaking in alphabetical order. Depending on the number of questions, all candidates will have an opportunity to be the first or last to answer the questions. We're now ready for your opening statement, Ms. Lum.
My thanks to the League for hosting us tonight, and I hope everyone's safe and well. It's been an honor to serve second ward residents, and I've worked hard to keep the promises I made to you: to be a responsible steward of your tax dollars, to proactively address second ward issues, and to bring an independent, common sense voice to the council table. I've also focused on increasing the level of engagement of residents and neighborhoods in the decisions affecting them. I've learned the more active the community participation, the better the outcome. The biggest issue in this campaign is single-family zoning. The mayor says he wants to disrupt residential neighborhoods with greater density, presumably apartment and condo buildings. My opponent contends there's too much socioeconomic segregation in Ann Arbor, for which these kinds of developments must be her solution. I have a different view. I want to continue to work to preserve the charm and character of our residential neighborhoods, not disrupt them. I look forward to our discussion tonight, and thanks again to the League.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Song, please, with your opening statement.
Sorry, thank you. Good evening, thank you for hosting this debate. I've had the pleasure of speaking with Ward 2 residents over the years. I've been a Ward 2 resident for nearly 20 years in Ann Arbor, and serving in different capacities as a volunteer, professionally, working in nonprofits. I'm drawn to city council because I've had the good experience of serving on the Ann Arbor District Library Board for the past four years. I was elected in 2016 and currently serve as the board president. I have a master's in social work from the University of Michigan and policy evaluation with an undergraduate degree in political science. My professional work has been responsive to community needs, from working with U of M's Healthy Asian Americans Project, to leading the Ann Arbor Educational Foundation and working at groups with groups such as nonprofit enterprise at work. My work comes, my work and my commitment to the community lends itself well to what I expect to see on council. I think council should be representative of the community it serves. I have been very active in our housing crisis and have served on that one.
Thank you, Ms. Song, I'm sorry. Thank you, candidates, and that are the questions. As a reminder, I'll be reading the question once, and it will not be repeated unless requested. To begin tonight, we'll start with Ms. Song. Here's the first question. These questions we received from community members, and they fall into several categories. Some have been around for a long time as big issues, such as housing, affordability, gentrification, environment, and some, based on recent events, have definitely now come to the forefront, such as safety, police reform, racial justice, diversity inclusion, and city budget challenges due to the pandemic. So here's the first question. In which of these areas do you think you have the most passion and the most capability to make a difference?
I believe I have, thank you, I believe I have the most passion in addressing our affordable housing crisis and looking at it in a way where we're not talking about just subsidized housing, but also workforce housing. Councilwoman Lum had mentioned that I'm looking at apartments in our neighborhoods. That is absolutely not the case. I cannot foresee a large building being built next to my own home, which is a colonial and a quarter acre lot. What I'd like to see is development among transit corridors in downtown. An example of this is with the Ann Arbor District Library. For the past couple of years, we've been looking at our own downtown parcel, and what would it look like if we added housing above the downtown property? And this is a model that we see in other cities where people would love to live above a library, close to transit, close to downtown amenities. So we can talk about development, we can talk about density in a way that still maintains neighborhood charm and the things that draw us to the community and keep us in the community.
Thank you, Ms. Lum.
Thank you. You mentioned several things. I'll start where Ms. Song left off. There's been much discussion, and again, I think one of the biggest issues facing us is because there's lots of talk, also by my opponent, about reforming land uses and zoning. And in fact, at our last debate, my opponent said we need to talk about zoning. Here's how the talk has been somewhat defined: support for more density, inclusive zoning, full support of the A20 plan, and that all that that implies in terms of the A20's land use recommendations, which did honestly include elimination of single-family zoning, land uses. The action on the look at density in the neighborhoods is still included. I think residents deserve straight talk about these matters that will have a direct impact on them, and I am a straight talker. And I think that it troubles me that some have characterized a pro-neighborhood preservation view, the view I take, as anti-housing, and we inundate people with talking points so that anybody who speaks against density in neighborhoods is viewed as a NIMBY, rather than actually analyzing whether the policy is really going to help the people we claim we intend to help. I have supported all the, for the most part, I mean, I really can't think of any affordable housing initiatives lately or over the years of my service that I have not supported. I did not support a recent proposal to convert a parking lot at Carytown for affordable housing, because we have not consulted with residents there. Transit-oriented development is part of this discussion, and the financial recovery, this is a significant time for the city. We have many financial challenges. We're facing about a $7 million deficit for the fiscal year, upcoming fiscal year '21, and I do think that I bring a lot of budget knowledge and understanding that would assist the city as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, and we answered first by Ms. Song. I'm sorry, no, we'll be sticking with you, Ms. Lum, you'll answer this first. Daily headlines are getting worse regarding COVID-19. Ann Arbor will be experiencing a significant drop in city revenue. What areas within the budget do you think could offer significant savings, but that will not seriously compromise important programs and services?
Need to unmute first, sorry. So we recently approved the budget, which we do every year around this time in May, and the budget this time around, though, was compiled pre-COVID. And the COVID-19 impacts on the city budget are significant, and the revised revenue estimates for just this fiscal year that ended yesterday indicated a $4 million deficit, which we're still grappling with for fiscal year '21, again, just under a $7 million deficit. I did bring forward recommendations on a financial recovery framework plan that was brought to us and outlined what priorities, which the city council adopted. And as priorities, we established that we should make furloughs, layoffs a low priority and retain as a high priority that funding is ensured. I worded the resolution this way, the actions necessary to support residents most impacted by the crisis. We set out strategic expectations, and the city is now enacting some of these things. We're deferring some capital projects, which we must do. We're eliminating funding that we would ordinarily, we've been consistently funding the VIBA and the pension plans. We will not be able to fund that as adequately. We're going, the excess funding will not occur, is not planned for fiscal year '21. And then there are other discretionary things, like the master plan update, which we're deferring, and we still, the revenue projections are still, hits are still fluid, and this is, thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Song?
So, I'm sorry, I can't see the timing, the time cards. Oh, great, okay, now I do, thank you. So the budget crisis, we do, we are entering a recession. I think, you know, as I talk to residents, the worry is, you know, we have high taxes, we just recently passed the billion-dollar school bond, and the entirety of the cost of leaving Ann Arbor is not, it's still quite unaffordable. The city's unaffordable. I spoke this morning with a firefighter who was very candid about how Ann Arbor is unaffordable, and we spoke a lot about the housing crisis. And I revisit this because the housing crisis, if we speak to it in the budget and how, you know, we keep kicking affordable housing and properly funding affordable housing, especially with 40/40/20 rebate from the county mental health, that's the county mental health and public safety rebate. I think that we need to make a commitment towards funding our basic services and our commitments to our community. Clearly, we have a budget shortfall, parking revenues are down, we will have to, you know, see how our businesses will be able to pay property taxes later in the year. We've got, we still have an unrestricted fund balance in the general fund, we'll have to consider a temporary waiver for that. We have other obligations, especially with our post-employment benefits. So, you know, I've been following what our interim administrator has been proposing as the CFO, and I think the staff has a really good sense of what's possible. But I also have been following closely what the DDA is doing and how their budgetary work has been following development so that we can still maintain and support the growth that will still happen. I mean, we are expecting a new hospital to be built here at U of M. Hopefully, we can see a return of students in the fall. So yes, things are still fluid, the budget will be finalized before this election, but I think we have some means to figure out how to protect, you know, what's most important for our community, as well as making sure that we invest in our values and our commitments. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be answered first by Ms. Song. Here we go. Most communities are becoming much more aware that racial bias is built into virtually every system in the United States. And while Ann Arbor takes pride in winning many Best City to Live in awards, it ranks poorly in income inequality and is identified as an economically segregated area. Please share your ideas, and our city council can identify and combat systemic racism in our community. Ms. Song?
So I will give you an example of what is being done at the Ann Arbor District Library Board of Trustees. When the protests were occurring around the country, there was, the immediate reaction with our board was to take a really good, close look at our policies, at our hiring policies, as well as to, part of their strategic plan in the past year was to revisit equity, racial equity, and making sure that our programs reach all populations. But besides just speaking a statement, we actually put things in action, and that was making sure that our board ourselves went through, go through unbiased training. This was a requirement that we had asked of staff, all staff, to undergo. I feel that that's really important. It's one thing to speak to social justice as some idea, a pie in the sky, but it's another to actually make a personal commitment to that end. We are a segregated community, and we can see that racially and economically, just by looking at how our schools are set up. When I was at the Educational Foundation, I prioritized Title I funding for our schools, because it's very clear how the educational experience varies across schools, across the same city. I think what the city can do is really lead and speak to those values, work collaboratively with Ann Arbor Public Schools, work with the county, and understand that when the county had their diversity, equity, inclusion program, they had, they have goals. There are also goals at the University of Michigan in inclusiveness, and that includes hiring policies, that includes, you know, commissions. There are ways to be inclusive in zoning and housing and the programs that we provide to the community, but it also requires a lot of introspection and I think really revisiting our history. I've looked at housing covenants in our community, there are racial covenants that are still on record, and if you speak to generations of African-American community members, there, this is a reality that, in a history that we haven't yet reckoned yet. And I think that if we revisit that, then we have a better way of seeing ourselves come to a better future, a more equitable future.
Thank you. And Ms. Lum?
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing this up, because Ms. Song does, she features this on her website, I will say, that economic segregation is a key issue in Ann Arbor. Again, it's mentioned prominently on her website, and she also mentions, again, inclusionary zoning and looking at zoning as a way to address this. And I, this is a, I do believe that the cost of housing in Ann Arbor is too high. This does contribute to economic disparities, certainly. Getting the cost of housing reduced is not an easy task, and what we're finding in other communities is that where this has been tried, Minneapolis is one now cited where single-family zoning wasn't eliminated to increase density, to address the affordability and inequity issues that Ms. Song speaks to. It's been, it's now being realized that blanket up zoning doesn't address the inequities in the way advocates have thought it would. In fact, they're finding it's hurting people, lower-income residents, in ways than it was intended to help. In terms of diversity training, I, as a council member, that I have attended the diversity, equity, and inclusionary programs that have been developed in concert with the city and the county, we coordinate on this, with this. And in terms of policing and how this intersects with policing, there is training that is ongoing and provided to our police department for, to address sensitivity to these issues, and, sorry, I'm out of time, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Lum, and you'll be first to answer the next question. Here we go. Now that city council unanimously adopted the A20 Carbon Neutrality Plan, what are the most important next steps city council could take, should take, to implement it?
Right, so we adopted the plan on June 1st, I supported it. Now it's up to the staff to develop, in concert with a prioritization framework, which I requested. The plan, when it came to us, did not have that, it also didn't have a funding plan. The funding plan is still very vague, I have to say, but to, I think that the right approach is to advance those goals, those objectives, that have the greatest leverage. And we have many that are low leverage, but, so I think we need a surgical focus on high-leverage actions, and again, the prioritization framework will help us in this regard. And there are many, actually, that have a negligible greenhouse gas emission reduction. We also need to, a lot of this is dependent on the funding that's available, and there are many assumptions, which we already know. For example, many of these proposals require, well, significant funding, as we all know. Funding sources include everything from $45 million from the solid waste management plan, savings over 10 years, that's a plan I supported, council did not support, so, and things like reprioritize the budget, which is not a, is not a funding plan. With the COVID financial, COVID-19 financial impacts, there's greater uncertainty, and as noted, the DDA is also experiencing financial challenges. And this year, in the plan going forward for fiscal year '21, it assumed $1 million from the DDA, and we now know that that's not realistic, and the DDA has eliminated that from their budget. So a lot of this will be driven by what's available in terms of funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Song?
Thank you. You know, I've been taking a closer look at the A20 investment plan, and what I think that we forget to take a close look at is what the cost savings are into implementing the A20 plan. The Office of Sustainability points out to how data shows that a dollar invested in energy efficiency saves $4 and $5 in energy costs, and DTE speakers are closer to $5. Every $1 invested in preparedness and resilience shows a return on investment of $7 in avoided costs. So renewable energy installations, like rooftop solar, has a payback of 10 to 12 years, and I think when we speak to A20, we can, we need to think about the timing of this, and how, given that there is a long rate of return, there's, it will take some time to really see the results of this work, but we also are behind. I think we can really look at the university and how its climate action plan is and works. So regardless of, you know, clearly, you know, we are facing a budget crunch, and it is difficult to prioritize work like this, but at the same time, we are a city that prioritize environmental action. We are a city that has pride itself in caring for our environment. And the big grill in the room is always the university, and the university's Presidential Commission on Carbon Neutrality is still working. John Mariski had a really great article, how it talked about looking at retrofitting buildings, launching requests for proposals for system-wide energy efficiency improvements, electrifying as all vehicle fleet and plan its maintenance accordingly. We have, we are just beginning to have this discussion. I feel like we, if we make this commitment, and we have funding already coming from the 40/40/20 pledge, we use it, we use it wisely, and we make, even if it's a small movement in the needle towards, understand, towards carbon neutrality, we make that effort, we made that commitment. It's a community value that we've, that we've committed to, and it's demonstrated with over 60 partnerships with institutions around the city and organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question will, excuse me, be let off, the answer will be let off by Ms. Song. The Black Lives Matter movement has evolved into a police funding issue. Do you believe that Ann Arbor needs to reallocate police funding to more social services, education, and mental health? Ms. Song?
I do. I do believe that we can be more creative with our police budget, and I really believe, given what Chief Cox's reaction to the Black Lives Matter movement, walking with protesters hand in, side by side, in a statement in support of what we're seeing in our community, is a strong indication that we have the good faith partner in reevaluating what public safety can look like in our community. I think it's a really exciting time. I'm really glad to hear that people are rethinking what public safety means, the cost of it, and also what we need to support our communities. I will always reference the Ann Arbor District Library, because I think we do the work well. We only evolve police when there's illegal activity, but until then, we work with our community partners. If there's a mental health issue, then we bring in community mental health, social workers from the county. If there's a homelessness issue or, you know, a drug issue, then we bring in the right people to solve the problem. And each problem is not a security problem, it doesn't have to be a police problem. I've been looking at the Kahoots program on the West Coast. There are ways where other communities approach policing compassionately, effectively, cost-effectively, in a way that we see the police as partners. But we also have to take a closer look, that every community works with the police and experiences the police differently. I look at our county sheriff and how his work has been inclusive, transformative, and an example of what the police can do throughout the country. At the same time, again, we also saw an incident not too, not too long ago with police behavior that was unheard of. We protect our community members, we speak to their needs, we do not, we cannot condone police violence. I am really excited about the Oversight Commission and its work. We need this critical eye toward the police with the police, and I was really excited to see that we were able to bring the resources that we need to the commission, but the conversation is just starting, and I really think that we need to also support the Human Rights Commission at the same time, so in a similar manner. Thank you.
Your turn, Ms. Lum.
Thank you. Yes, this is a, this is a time that, where we're all engaged in thinking about policing in general, and specifically, obviously, here in Ann Arbor. I will say, I think that, as a community, we have been ahead of this conversation, and we're well positioned, because we created the Independent Police Oversight Commission. I am honored to be one of the council liaisons on that commission, and I do think that this is a group that can really serve to help lead the process in terms of researching best practices, engaging the community, deliberating as a group, making recommendations to council, but I am confident that there's strong agreement that amongst my colleagues and others in the community, that this group can assist with these conversations. It's also, of course, essential, we have a fine, an outstanding police chief, Chief Cox, to be integrally involved. Our police department does, there's been lots of discussions about police reform. I think it's, you know, with any organization, in-depth operational reviews conducted by external parties are good things and necessarily, necessary periodically, and so we're doing a lot of that now. And in terms of our police department, I think it should be noted that we are one of 11 police agencies in the nation that have an accreditation called the CALEA, which stands for, it's an acronym for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. It's a national standard for industry best practices. So, and we, without accreditation, we are constantly evaluating best practices, and it should be noted that, as part of this, that our police officers are often called to assist people in situations that are noncriminal, and our police department, so, comes in contact with folks facing crisis, mental health crises, issues, homelessness, and we work closely, they work closely with community mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lum, and stay tuned for the last question. And Ms. Lum, you'll lead this off. Last question. The Green Belt Millage designates 1/3 of the proceeds for acquisition of parkland within the city limits. Due to the lack of recent parkland acquisition within the city limits, this portion of the fund has accumulated a $6 to $7 million balance. Our city has 163 parks, spanning 2,188 acres. Should this fund balance be used to acquire additional parkland while there's still land available, or does Ann Arbor already have enough parks and better use for the money? Ms. Lum?
Well, this is, this would be a decision for the, for our residents, and I do think, I do think that, given the fund balance, that it would not be inappropriate to have, and I, this is one of the items I have listed for council budget conversations and discussions, because we also have a lot of other significant investments. and discussions, because we also have a lot of other significant investments we'd like to make in the tree line, in the library lot, the border-to-border trail. We have many open space projects, developments that require funding. And I don't think it's unreasonable to have this community conversation about the Green Belt Millage, see if, you know, it's maybe time to think about investing some of these dollars. I would certainly support this in our community. We just haven't had this conversation. And I, and I think it's appropriate to contemplate this now. Open space is considered, you know, a value. And our parks, villages are always well-supported. And so, we know our community values, the open spaces that we have, all the neighborhood parks and recreational facilities. And given the needs that we have here within the city limits, I don't think it's unreasonable to, again, have a community, a robust community discourse about this, to see what we can do to advance some of these other projects that are really, you know, we have lots of plans for everything, again, from the tree line to the library lot, border-to-border trail. But we, you know, simply require financial resources. And perhaps the Green Belt Millage would be a fund, an appropriate funding source to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lum. Ms. Song?
My understanding with millage funding is that the, when millage money comes in, it's dedicated to what the voters had voted for. So, say the school millage, you know, school bonds for buildings, it's for buildings, it's not for operations. When the Green Belt Millage came about, when I speak to residents, this is a point of pride. This is, this is, this is, this allows us to add and preserve surrounding parkland with the commitment also to understand that this limits sprawl. So, by having this belt, this beautiful green belt around our community, we support green space, we support high-value parkland. Because I understand that the, it's not just any space that qualifies for Green Belt funding and acquisition. It's a concerted, very thoughtful process to see what, which parcels qualify for this. I believe there are two parks that were recently enhanced here, here in Ward 2. And this was a commitment that a developer made in contributing to the local community. Here in Ward 2, we have the Thurston Nature Center. This is, this is an effort that was started in the 60s, and it's multi-generational. And I think it's a really good example of how we really preserve and treasure green space. And it's a community commitment, and it's not a financial burden. It's a point of pride, it's what brings people to the neighborhood, it decreases home values. And I see the Green Belt Millage and the funding that the parks in a similar way. You know, the caveat also is that with Green Belt Millage is that, the Green Belt funding is that we look to density downtown. So, with that belt means that growth happens in certain areas, and then it means that our community has committed to not contributing to sprawl. I think, you know, we love our parks, we value our parks, we don't use millage money as a way to find general revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're ready for closing statements. And we're going to begin with Ms. Lum.
In serving as your second ward representative, my focus has always been and will continue to be on local issues, second ward neighborhood concerns, and citywide issues. The city is facing significant financial challenges due to the pandemic, and prioritization of scarce resources is more necessary than ever. I've authored over 40 budget amendments to reallocate spending to what you've told me are your priorities: delivering high-quality basic services, reinvesting in the city's streets and other infrastructure, and providing for essential human services. Several council colleagues encouraged me to run because they believe my experience and in-depth knowledge of the city budget will be important assets in successfully meeting these fiscal challenges. A council member's role goes beyond policymaker. It's also problem solver and facilitator. I've been asked to run by many second ward folks to appreciate the help I provided them in solving a problem, navigating City Hall, or speaking up on their behalf. Providing hands-on, neighborhood-friendly representation will remain job one for me. Let's circle back to where I started, neighborhoods and zoning. I don't agree with those advocating eliminating single-family zoning or revising it dramatically to allow more density. Rather, I believe Ann Arbor is a wonderful place to live, in large part because of the strength and livability of our neighborhoods. I have not and will not support zoning changes placing that at risk. I hope I've been able to earn your vote on August 4th, and thank you very much for your consideration and for your time tonight.
Ms. Song?
We've talked about a handful of local issues and how city council's decisions impact our quality of life in Ann Arbor. These issues are not new or specific only to our city, and although challenging, are not impossible to address. Ann Arbor claims its position as a best of and many lists, but the real difficult work is identifying who we are as a community and how we prioritize our values. City services function rather well here, and we have a great history of doing innovative work. Lori Terrace Downtown, two buildings, 10 stories, built in four years, one of the first low-income, senior-low-income HUD developments in the country. We are, we say, "The team, the team, the team," even for folks who don't follow sports. We understand that there are institutions that we value, that we treasure, that we protect. We also know that, we also promote the idea that we are a welcoming city. Understanding zoning, affordable housing is not a threat to current residents. It means that we open our communities. As other, as this community has welcomed me and my family, I would welcome others along the way. I really believe in the generosity of Ann Arborites. I really believe that we have an evolution of thinking of local politics, where our values and parties can align with our passions that we display in every other area and every other expertise. But we really need to take a close eye as to what we can do here. And I really believe that there's a wonderful and positive future if we think collaboratively, creatively, and really look back to our history of innovation and amazing things that we contribute to here in the community, in the area, and through the state. Thank you.
Wonderful job, ladies. Now, ready for closing statements. Sally?
The League thanks the Ward 2 candidates for participating in tonight's forum, and all those who contributed questions. All our candidate forums will be available for streaming on your computer and smartphones. Just go to our website, lwbannarbor.org, and you will find the link to these programs. In addition, you can access these forums on CTN. For additional nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, go to vote411.org, which is the League's voter resource guide covering local, state, and federal candidates and current proposals that will appear on your ballot. You go to the site, put in your individual address, and every race that you can vote in will appear, along with the candidates, and along with the candidates answering specific questions. It's very useful. Also, with the proposal, the passage of Proposal 3 in 2018, all voters are now eligible to do absentee voting. So, there's no reason to not vote in the primary. It's so important to make your vote count this year. In addition, you can register to vote and vote right up through the day of the election. So, just remember, no matter how you do it, make sure you vote in the August 4th primary election.